It's been 6:30. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mary, are we voting with through board docs or are we taking just?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the open online voting.
Great.
Perfect.
All right, I got my.
I had to refresh mine, so one moment.
Yeah, one minute me too.
Okay, how'd we do?
Good. I was able to, I think.
It just looks like Jordana did not.
Yeah. She didn't log in yet, so we'll just mark her as absent.
She just, she just did.
I voted okay.
Okay.
Hey, perfect. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance. Okay. So on to item four, President's comments. So just a few updates for the board and the public. We will be, starting in November, working toward having one business meeting a month and one educational meeting a month. So just as a heads up going forward, that's what our format will be versus the month of October where we have two business meetings. And with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Nichols for the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Brian. So I just want to touch upon a few things. I'll start by saying that the school reopening, given the difficult times, is going pretty well. It's not perfect, but big picture, I think we're doing pretty well. As of today, we've had no reported cases of COVID-19.
Excellent.
Which is good news, but.
Yes.
In fact, as the weather gets colder and people are indoors more frequently, that may change, but doing our best to follow the protocols that have been disseminated from New York State and Suffolk County Department of Health. We have picked up a little bit of frustration on the part of parents to the extent that some of them would like their students to be in school every day rather than the hybrid schedule that currently exists in grades nine through 12. And I just want to make a comment that we would like them to be in school every day as well, but the the format that we came up with is the best we can do while providing for the social distancing that's called for by the Department of Health. And that although we'd like them to come in every day, doing so while adhering to the social distancing guidelines is really not possible. So we'll continue to monitor the situation and should things change, we'll adapt. But as it stands right now, we're really not in a position where we can have at the high school level come in every day. Related to that, there, there seems to be changing guidance coming down from the government on a weekly basis, and we're doing our best when that comes down to reflect that changing guidance, both on the website and in our reopening and safety plans. And I just want to thank the school nurses and the administrators for constantly staying up to date on the guidance and then communicating with Mr. Fisher about the changes that need to be made. I'll give you one brief example. Up until last week, if a student or an adult, a staff member had exhibited symptoms associated with COVID-19, and those symptoms are pretty wide reaching. It could be sore throat, it could be sniffles, it could be stomach ache, stomach upset, anything really. That person was required to produce a negative COVID test if they wanted to return to school before the 14-day period that was required for them to stay away. And that was a non-negotiable. So if I presented with symptoms and I was sent home, we were communicating to families, get a, get a test and produce evidence of the negative COVID result. Otherwise, you have to stay out for 14 days. That guidance changed last week, and now the added wrinkle is they have to produce a negative COVID test or an alternate diagnosis from a, from a doctor. And that diagnosis has to be backed up by a test. So if, for instance, a child went to the doctor and the doctor thought that it wasn't COVID, but in fact strep throat and the alternate diagnosis was strep throat, the doctor could present that evidence to the school along with the strep test to back up the diagnosis. And the student would be promoted to return to school without a COVID test prior to the 14 days playing out. I'll move on quickly to an enrollment summary, specifically where we're at with remote families choosing remote, the remote option. So at the elementary school, you currently have 58 students out of a population of roughly around 400 that have opted to select the remote option. That's stayed pretty consistent from the 14th of September when we opened. It's dropped from 66 to 58. And at the middle school, high school, the total number of students, grades six through 12, who've selected the remote option and as of the 5th of October are still in that option is 89. So a little bit more at the middle school, high school, I will say that the majority of those students, majority statistically. The 12th grade has 23 students selected to go remote. So there are proportionately more students as you get older selecting the remote option. A quick update on co-curriculars. I know that along with people wanting their children to be in school, especially at the high school level every day, there's also a desire to start up co-curriculars. And I had said over the summer when this was brought up that we would revisit it towards the end of September. And we have revisited it. And here's where we're tentatively at. The, the situation's a little bit different in my eyes for students in grades nine through 12 versus K through eight. So both Mr. Malone and Ms. Raynoe Arrow accurately point out that because of cohorting being able to be achieved at the elementary and middle school, the notion of co-curriculars runs counter to that, to those efforts. And at this point, to run co-curricular activities, grades K through eight diminishes the purpose, if you will, of all the cohorting we're doing day in and day out. That is not the case grades nine through 12. In grades nine through 12, we've stated from the beginning, it's very difficult to cohort. So as a result, running co-curriculars nine through 12 doesn't have the counterintuitive, if you will, impact that it does K through eight. And as a result, over the next week or two, Ms. Carriero, along with Mr. Guinan, will be selectively starting up co-curriculars, obviously with attention to safety protocols. But again, that'll start up in the next week or two. Finally, I wanted to touch really briefly upon a discussion we had at the last meeting, which was around Indigenous Peoples' Day, Juneteenth, Columbus Day, and the notion of perhaps revisiting those holidays and having a discussion about whether or not in the future, they should remain on the school calendar. What we proposed at the last meeting was that we form a committee whose primary charge would be to address the issue, do some research and provide advisory recommendations to the Board of Education. Not for the 2020 calendar, but for the 2021, 22 calendar, which would be next year. And my proposal to the board is that that committee should be comprised of students, preferably from all three schools, I would think, more heavily weighted towards the older students, just because they might be able to more actively participate. So I was thinking maybe two students from the elementary school, four from the middle school, and perhaps six from the high school. And those students could be selected by Mr. Malone at the elementary school, along with Ms. Reynoso, and the middle school, high school student council could select the students at those two levels. One teacher from each building, the teachers association can, can select those people, those teachers, the building principals, parents, one parent from each building, and I recommend that the PTSA and the PTA select those members. And then finally, two Board of Education members. And I believe that the Board of Education president can recommend two members for inclusion on the committee. And then I left myself out, obviously, the superintendent. So that's the superintendent's report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board for Jeff at this time?
Um, I've got a question, and I apologize, I didn't float this upfront. It just occurred to me while you were giving it updates. So if you don't have an answer right now, that, that wouldn't be unexpected. But what are we seeing in terms of ridership on the buses right now?
I know that it was not what it had been in the past, but I, as per your comment, I'd like to check in with our transportation director before answering that, so I give accurate information.
I'm just wondering if, if the ridership is way down, if there's a way to save some money and consolidate a little bit, that's all.
I do know that with regard to transportation, this, and it's not only the case with regard to this year, but in past years as well, you have to, you have to plan for maximum ridership. So even though at a current time, today, the, the numbers may be low, you can't necessarily adjust those routes to reflect that, because should there be an increase, you'd be out of compliance in terms of busing. But we'll take a look at it now. I will send the board an update later this week.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Any other board members? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to ask a question of the board or the administration? And/or this would be your opportunity for a public comment as well. Just raise your hand and Mr. Fisher will unmute you or put your question into the chat box.
I do not see any hands raised at the moment.
We also will have an opportunity at public input number two. So with that, I would move on to section seven of tonight's agenda.
And that's the principal's report, Brian?
No, I'm sorry, 6.1, my mouse is moving fast, is the principal's report. And Jeff, I don't know if you have, might have a camera issue. Get some text.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna log out once I turn it over to Ms. Carriero.
Great.
Malone, and then I'll log back in, but my camera seems to be malfunctioning. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Malone, for any comments about the last week or two.
Very good. All yours, Mr. Malone.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just a, I guess a brief update since our last meeting, as Mr. Nichols indicated, I think overall, the reopening has been successful. You know, a few bumps along the way, but thanks to the collective efforts of everyone from the parents to the faculty, to of course, the students. Things at the elementary school have been going well. Just a couple pieces of note, the, the original arrival plan that we set out at the beginning of the year allotted a substantial amount of time for the temperature scanning and just trying to maintain social distancing requirements. And everyone's done such a great job that we were actually able to decrease the time allotted and therefore gain back some important instructional time. So we actually pulled back an additional 10 minutes, so therefore starting morning program 10 minutes earlier and getting, getting to class that much earlier. I think our, our schedule is, is going well. Little tweaking here and there, but overall, the day, the day has been going smoothly with the mask breaks, and they've been an example of something that's very positive, provides a lot of fresh air, good exercise. And, you know, the obvious break from wearing the mask during the day. Just last week, for, for our first time, we held our curriculum night or, or our back-to-school night, but we did it virtually. So all of the classrooms held a Google Meet and looking at the attendance records, the attendance by parents was strong. You know, the feedback that I've received is that the teachers did a great job, provided a good overview of the year to come and, you know, kind of highlighted the exciting things that the children are doing within their cohorts. And then lastly, we're, as a faculty, still remaining mindful of being prepared if, if, and if we do have to make a switch to remote learning, whether it be a cohort having to go remote due to a quarantining mandate. Or, you know, hopefully, we don't get to this point, but if, if things, things change on the ground, we, you know, if we have to switch as a school, we believe that we're putting in, in the time now so that the children are comfortable with the technology and the different programs and would be able to make a smooth transition if it's needed.
Thanks, Matt. So for the middle high school, same sentiments. Our faculty and staff have been going above and beyond through this crazy transition of opening up in a pandemic. It's now becoming normalized. There have been a ton of bumps in the roads, but I think as a staff, we've been reflective and creative in fixing those. One was fixing the middle school schedule, creating a mask break schedule. We still need to tune up a little bit here and there. Upcoming events and things that have been going on. Our college and career counselor has been holding various workshops for students that are applying to colleges as well as upcoming students going to be applying to college. We have a financial aid night happening at 6:30 on Thursday evening. And last week, she held a college application night for the senior class that was very well attended. And ones that she couldn't attend, she recorded it and sent it out. In middle school, there's Whaler Wars Wednesday headed by our dean of students, Ms. Westhoff, where we're gonna have fun activities and challenges. Wednesday is the day the middle school is there by themselves, as everyone in the high school is remote learning. So we're excited about that. In high school, today was the first day our seniors were able to eat together. As Mr. Nichols mentioned previously, the grades nine through 12 are not co-horted because of the hybrid schedule model. So our senior class was happy to be all together, eating lunch together. Mr. Winkler and Ms. Emerson are overseeing them, and they're gonna try to think of creative ways, because they can't go off campus, how to make their senior year as best as possible during lunch. We have been planning clubs and co-curriculars. They hopefully will be on the next meeting agenda. We've been meeting with parents and interested parties for making sure we can do a socially-distanced school play and other events that can happen and hopefully socially-distanced. And then our progress reports are gonna come out next week, and our curriculum night is tomorrow. We are attempting a virtual curriculum night. It will be the same type of deal, except for parents having to be lost, running around our building and getting directed. They will be meeting virtually period by period through grade-level Google documents for the curriculum night set up by department so that they are able to transition to different Google meets. And then during the lunch periods, which always is almost kind of like a lost period to an extent during curriculum night, we have meetings that are available from our counseling office as well as our administration. So parents can go on different Google meets to ask questions and raise concerns and comments for us. And conversation with administrators, we're still doing, but we changed it up this Friday. There's gonna be a high school one at 9:00 AM and a 10 o'clock one for middle school. So we split it up just because the nature of the beast this year, our schedule is not very different. The middle school is all in person, while the high school is hybrid, and we want to support each of those entities to make sure we're reaching every child. So that's what's going on in the middle high school.
Great. Any questions from board members or either of our principals? Guys are getting off easy tonight. Okay, no questions from members of the board. Do we have Jeff back yet?
Yes.
I appear to be back just in the nick of time.
Alrighty. I didn't know if there was anything else you wanted to add. You didn't hear the principal's report. We didn't have any questions, so unless there was something you wanted to add, Mr. Nichols, we would move on to our consent agenda.
Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Is there a motion for consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.20?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Can we open up the voting, please?
First discussion?
To consent agenda.
Right. You still can ask if anybody.
Okay, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Okay.
unanimous.
Great. No. Are there any, I know we didn't have anything on there. I know some of the under items for discussion, are there any items that board members would like to bring up now for discussion or bring up so that it could be listed at a future meeting?
I have a couple of things. In terms, in terms of just committee reports, you know, obviously, we haven't kind of launched the committees yet, but I think it, you know, I would advocate that we go forward and ask for participants on committees so we can get things started, because we're already, you know, obviously into October.
I think, I agree with that, Chris. I think to that end, we just finished the attendance from last year's committees that was circulated to the board. And letters will be going out as to members who didn't meet the participation requirements. Based on those numbers, we would be asking for the public to submit their interest in serving on any of those committees based on availability, which we would be able to take up at the next meeting. That's more of a public service announcement, not an answer to your question, Chris.
No, but that.
Just going tailing on to your, on to your comment on that, so.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to share. And also, there may be people who did it to meet the attendance requirements, but this year will be opting not to serve for whatever reason. So it's good to check that, but I just, you know, I would, I would encourage us that, you know, if we can get that moving. And then the other thing that, and you and I have talked about this offline, was that tonight, we appointed an interim school business administrator. So if we could just, you know, if the superintendent could just mention the process for that moving forward.
So the, the tentative plan at this point is to post for the position. We have a commitment from the interim school business administrator to stay in that role until we find a suitable candidate, and the hope is to have someone in place by early, early December.
Thank you.
Any other discussion items, members of the board, anything you'd like to bring up for, not necessarily this meeting, but if you want to see something appear on a future agenda?
Brian, do you have a, do you have a timeline on for the committees at this point?
Yes. So, thank you. I did have that. I wrote it down. I apologize. So the letters to, for attendance will be going out by the end of this week, as well as the inquiry to the public as to the amount of spots that'll be open. Those will be, both will happen by Friday. And then we would ask that those letters be received by, I'm just trying to, a week before our next meeting.
Okay. So then my other question is, when will you be speaking with the board, with board members or letting us know what committees you chose and or, you know, we've decided to be on?
Sure. That the, within the same timeframe, so a week before the next meeting, we'll, we'll have those discussions based on everyone's email inquiry back to me. It seems like we'll be able to fill most of those as to the requests of the members.
Okay, great. And then I just, one other thing. Did, Jeff, want to give an update? Did we get any progress on the, on the signage for Stellum Sag Harbor Learning Center?
So it's gonna be. Yes. Thank you for reminding me. That should have been part of my superintendent's report. Mr. Fisher, could you bring up the, the several pictures that I want to recommend to the board? Thank you. So can we click on the, yeah. So I'm a pretty basic person. You had asked me to come up with a recommendation. And my recommendation for the sign at the front entrance is before you, black lettering, very simple Sag Harbor Learning Center. And for Sage Hall, can you go to that slide, Mr. Fisher? Similar lettering on the front entrance. So as per the last meeting, that, those are my recommendations. Happy to, if there are any questions.
No, I just want to say that, and actually, when I drove past Pearson the other day, that actually matches on Pearson Hill, the front of the building, I think. Pretty similar, where it says Pearson High School. So I'm good.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Looks good. I like it.
Clean.
I as well saw both of the letterings as well. Happened to drive by recently as well, and it looked, it looked, Sag Harbor Learning Center looks really nice, so.
Good.
I like this recommendation very much. It was my favorite of the choices.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to weigh in that's at this meeting on the proposal? Raise your hand or put a question in the chat box.
I do not see any hands raised.
I don't see anything in the chat box. So we will move on to public input number two, item 13.1. Is there anybody here that would like to speak during public input number two?
Still not seeing any hands or any chats.
Must be answering a lot of questions. Nobody's here. Okay. It's a good thing. With that, I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening. There will be a motion on the floor to go into executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person and potential litigation matters. After we come out of that meeting, if that motion should pass, there will be no action taken by the board for purposes of the public to wait around or be part of that. And with that, is there a motion for item 14.1?
Oh, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We'll open up the voting.
Now, let's go into this executive for what issue, Brian?
So it was executive session to discuss the employment of a particular person, a contract issue, and potential litigation with counsel.
Thank you.
All right. So we're gonna sign off and, and sign back on with the other link?
We are just waiting. Voting to come up.
Right. Refresh my page.
Mary, the boxes, it's not popping up on the screen.
Okay, so we can just do it. I say we just do it verbally.
Yeah, so we'll just take, we'll take.
Let's do that.
Yep.
Who's in favor?
I.
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 I. Any opposed? Motion carry 7-0. Thank you. Motion carry seven zero. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
See you, guys. Next meeting.